Evening and welcome to the Livonia City Council. The Honorable Brandon Kritzman will lead us in the Pledge Allegiance. Will you all rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Kritzman. We'd like to welcome you to the 1,886th meeting, regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This will be a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at our next regular scheduled meeting to be held on Monday, December 16th of this year, where there'll be no snow. Will the Clerk please take the role? We have one absence. Councilwoman White.
Councilmember Kritzman?
I'm sorry, are we doing attendance or...
Attendance.
Present. Clearly distracted.
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Meakin?
Here.
Vice President Jolly?
Present.
President Toy?
Here.
We have a quorum, Council. Now I need the presentation of the minutes of the 1,885th regular meeting of the City Council, which was held on Wednesday, November 18th.
I will offer approval of the minutes.
Thank you, support. You've heard approval by Councilwoman McIntyre and supported by Councilman Kritzman. Would the Clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes. Council, do we have any announcements, tributes, or recognitions tonight of anyone? Councilman Meakin and then Councilwoman McIntyre.
Thank you, Madam President. We have one retirement in the month of November. Battalion Chief David Bostatter is retiring after 25 years and nine months of service to the Livonia Fire Department. He did an amazing job for us, and I wish him well in his retirement.
Thank you, Councilman Meakin. Councilwoman McIntyre, please.
I had the pleasure today of attending the formal first day of business of a new Livonia coffee shop, Anastasia and Katie's Coffee Shop and Cafe. And it's at 19215 Merriman Road, and we have many coffee shops, outstanding coffee shops in Livonia. It's always nice to welcome one more, and I'll read you their description. Anastasia and Katie's Coffee Shop and Cafe is an inclusive competitive employer of people of all abilities, serving gourmet coffee, breakfast food, and lunch fare. And as an inclusive employer, they employ people who, some of whom have been in our Western Wayne Skill Center, and look for opportunities to work, and it's really a lovely environment and nice to see a city business moving towards finding a way for inclusive employment. So, anyway, I just wanted to welcome them and congratulate them on their first official day.
Absolutely. Great job.
Madam President.
Yes, please, Councilman Barr.
There is a chance, due to a Stevenson Choir concert, that I'm not going to be able to be here at our meeting in two weeks. So even though it seems a little premature, I want to just take a minute and publicly acknowledge my colleagues, Brandon Kritzman and Brian Meakin, who I've had the pleasure of serving with on this council for the last four years. Our next meeting will be their last, and in case I'm not able to be here, I wanted to just thank both of you. Both Brandon and Brian have been incredibly gracious to me during my first four years on council. Each one of them brings a unique expertise that we've all drawn on from time to time. They're both going to be missed as a result of that, and most importantly, they've just really become friends, not just colleagues, but friends of mine, and I'm going to miss having them up here. So I just want to take this opportunity, Brian and Brandon, to thank you. It's been a privilege working with you, and who knows, maybe someday we'll see you back.
Slow down.
Whoa, Dilly.
Thank you for that. All right. Anyone else? Let me just share with you that Councilman Meakin, who sits to my right here, who's our parliamentarian as well, will be celebrating his 49th birthday quite soon here in December. So we just want to wish him well before we forget about his birthday, which is our next meeting on the 16th, because I know your birthday is before the 16th, because you're older than the four of us in December, because your birthday falls in the early part of the month.
Early stage, okay.
Yes, sir. That's fuzzy math by Bentley High School, sir. And furthermore, we also have Linda McCann, who's in that group, as well as our Mayor Dennis Wright, who will all turn another year older and wiser. So happy, happy birthday, Councilman Meakin.
Thank you, Madam President.
That didn't sound like Marilyn Monroe, I know. Yeah. Okay. Anywho, thank you for being here, and I will see you on the 16th. All right. I want to introduce our department heads, who do a fabulous job for this city, and to my left is Todd Solinsick, who, what do you do, Todd? You're the engineer. And, I'm teasing you. And then we have the ever-present Mark Terramina, who helps a lot of our business folks get started and work through a lot of glitz and glitches in our city, which cuts through that red tape. Thank you, Mark, for all you do, too. And of course, Sarah, who's in our office, Sarah K., that is, who does a wonderful job as well. She's new to the scene this year and probably enjoys it immensely, right, Sarah?
Yes, you do.
Yes, you do, okay. And to our right is Paul Bernier, who is our very capable city attorney and keeps us out of trouble most of the time. And then there's Susan Nash, who is our city clerk, and Linda Scheel, who is also our city treasurer. Many of our department heads that you're going to hear from tonight as well. Thank you for being here. All right. Is there, let's see, we're going to have new data, Council, on items seven, eight, and 10, and then now we'll turn to audience communication. This is your opportunity to address, Council, on any item that's not on the green agenda. And you have, what is it, three minutes?
Three minutes.
Three minutes. And our timekeeper, the ever-capable Councilman Meakin, and his trusty phone will clock you. Madam Treasurer, good evening.
Good evening, Madam President and City Council Members. As City Treasurer, I wanted to let all Livonia property and business owners know that the 2019 winter tax bills have been issued and mailed. They are due payable without interest through Friday, February 14th of 2020. If you have not yet received yours in the mail, you should get it within the next few days. Even if your mortgage company pays your property taxes, we send out an informational copy to you. It will state "informational copy" on the bill in the top-left side box. To assist our property and business owners, we do accept partial payments throughout this time period with no additional charges, as long as the total bill is paid in full by Friday, February 14th. You may return your tax payment by mail in the blue return envelope provided, or you may place your payment envelope in the red drop box just outside of City Hall, but we do not accept cash there. Or you may bring your payment into the Treasurer's Office during normal business hours. On page four of the City of Livonia Fall and Winter Newsletter, you will find property tax information, along with the Assessment Department information, which I recommend that our residents and business owners, especially our small business owners, review. For further information, I encourage you to visit the Treasurer's Office page of our city website at www.livoniatax.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the tax bill, too. Okay. You've heard the City Treasurer, and I'm sure everybody enjoys that blue envelope that comes in right before Christmas. All right. Was there anyone else? Mr. Beringhaus, good evening.
Good evening, President Toy. My name's Jim Beringhaus. I reside at 37195 Waymouth, Livonia, Michigan. I'm the Chairman of the Greenleaf Commission on Sustainability. On behalf of the Greenleaf Commission, first I'd like to thank Mayor Wright, the Livonia City Council, and Dan Roroff's team at the Livonia DPW Department for supporting the Greenleaf Commission's recommendation of adopting the Simple Recycling Program for the City of Livonia, Michigan. What I'd like to do tonight is just give you a brief update on the program prior to its launch on December 9th. For those of you who are not aware, Simple Recycling is basically a free curbside clothing and household goods recycling program that's going to launch in our community starting on December 9th. Your pickup date for recycled clothing and recycled home goods will coincide with the date of your normal trash pickup day of the week. The Greenleaf Commission itself began reviewing this program early this year, basically around March, and then focused on it extensively prior to its approval. Communications for the program in the mail, just before Thanksgiving, there was a packet that was sent out to homeowners with information about the program itself, and there were also two recycling bags available as well, so you could start utilizing this program. In addition to that, contact information, website addresses, email addresses, and an 800 number are both published on the communication piece itself, as well as the plastic bags that are part of this program as well. The Livonia, we've been communicating the program with this mailer, also through the city Facebook site itself. The Livonia Community Facebook page is communicating the program as well. The key message with this program is that we want to encourage residents to donate first and then recycle, so that if you have generally-used clothing that you've always donated to an established charity, like Goodwill or Purple Heart, and that's what you're comfortable with doing, please continue to do that. The goal of Simple Recycling is to take materials that you normally wouldn't donate to these charities, keep them out of landfills by putting them in the orange recycling bag itself. Good comments are being received on social media. Comments like "awesome, I have the stuff." There's sharing comments about the programs with other communities, very positively received as well. Also on the city's Nextdoor site as well, the program's being communicated. In fact, it's one of the top postings for the week within the Livonia community. Nextdoor is a private neighborhood website. There's about 80 of these sites in Livonia that were communicating the program as well. I have to compliment Communications and Marketing Manager, Kristin Hawkins, for doing a great job. She's intervening in the communications, answering any questions directly itself. So again, we're looking forward to launching this program on December 9th. We thank you for your support. Also, I'd like to take a moment myself to thank Brian Meakin. It's been a pleasure working with you on council, as well as Councilmember Brandon Kritzman. Just as a footnote, it was Brandon Kritzman's vision to establish the Greenleaf Commission. I worked closely with him to make this happen, and because of his efforts, we're now a full Pledge City Commission. So thank you very much, and as a commission, we look forward to supporting the Livonia residents on environmental initiatives for our community. Thank you.
Sure. Hold on one minute. Councilman Meakin. Oh, I thought you had a question. Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll say something.
Certainly, please go right ahead.
Thanks for that comment, Jim, and I just want to thank you for your efforts. Really, it was just a thought and something that I helped get started, but you certainly have been involved in that from the outset and have done a fine job taking that from an initial ad hoc committee to the full commission that it is today, and I don't think that would have been as short a process without your leadership. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
And if I may, Mr. Beringhaus, if people have questions on this, where should they call?
There's an 800...
Obviously, the city, but what department?
Yeah, they can call the Department of DPW. There's an 800 number as well, 866-835-5068. Published right on the card and on the recycling bag itself.
On that bag?
Yes.
Okay. And that way, if they run out of bags, or there aren't enough bags, obviously, then get more, right?
They'll call that number, their account will be flagged, and then on their trash pickup day, two replacement plastic bags will be left at the curb for the homeowner.
Now, as I recall, we do get a little bit of revenue generated from this program, correct?
That's correct.
The city, right? Okay, good. All right. Well, thank you. This is a wonderful program, and we commend you and your team there.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. And is there anyone else wishing to speak to the council in any manner that's not on the green sheet? Here he comes.
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening, sir.
Councilmembers. Preston Peterson, Chief Staff for State Representative Joel Jones. I hope everyone had a very nice Thanksgiving and hopefully a good holiday season. And we too want to wish the retiring council members well. We've had the opportunity to work with you, and we know you're on to bigger and better things in some respects, so. There hasn't been a lot of activity in the legislation. We've been out of session for the last month. We have some bills pending that we hope will make a difference in terms of safety, especially for young children. There's a apparent problem with people boarding school buses, unauthorized people boarding school buses and inflicting violence on some of the youth. So we have, we're trying to pass a bill that will restrict access and in fact increase the penalties for entering a bus without authorization. Recently, we passed an expulsion, expulsion, expulsion bill, which will hopefully allow people in the Detroit area, about 200,000 people, to remove some criminal convictions that will inhibit their, that inhibit their ability to get employment. And we think that'll make a big difference in terms of not only their lives, but also the community in terms of making them productive citizens again. The last thing I want to mention is the Secretary of State asked us to mention the fact that we now have online voter registration. We already have voter registration, but now online voting is in effect, and so we'd like the community residents to take advantage of that. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Doing a nice job. Thank you very much, sir. Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay. All righty. Council, then we'll move into our regular agenda, and we'll file the reports from the mayor and any other city officials that have any or want to speak to such. I see none. Yes, go right ahead.
Before you get into the consent agenda, I'd like to remove item five from the consent agenda.
Support. Moved by Councilman Meakin and supported, was that Kritzman? Yes.
Actually, it doesn't need, it doesn't need a motion. We can just remove it.
Right. So, Madam Clerk, Kritzman said he still supports it regardless, so we'll let him go ahead and do that since, you know...
Still learning.
We're still learning, exactly. Okay. If there's, if there's nothing else, then we're going to move items one through four, which are listed on the consent agenda, will be voted on as one item. This does not mean that they are less important, they have been deemed rather not controversial in nature. Do I have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, please.
I'll offer an approving resolution for the consent agenda.
Support.
Vice President offers. Councilwoman McIntyre supports. Madam Clerk, if you take the vote?
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes. If I may go back to five removal, are you wanting that on the next meeting on the 16th, Councilman?
I was going to offer a resolution to that fact, once we bring the item up.
Okay, great. Okay. We'll do then. Okay. Council, we are on unfinished business. We're on meetings, or on item five. Go right ahead.
Madam President, I'd offer the resolution to move this to the next regular meeting.
Support.
That would be December 16th, for clarification, correct, Councilman? And that's supported by Councilwoman McIntyre. Was there discussion? Yes, go right ahead.
I know this is a critical item for our Engineering Department to get this in for this calendar year, so I'll, a resident called and asked us if we would delay this briefly so that they can solve a minor issue that he thinks they can get taken care of between him, the owner of the property, as well as Engineering. So as long as we make sure they all know that they have to get this done by that next meeting, so, thank you, Madam President.
Absolutely, sure. Council, any further discussion on this? Anyone from the audience wishing to discuss this item, number five? Here and seeing no one, would the Clerk please take the vote?
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Motion passes. Council, we're under meetings of the committee. The Committee of the Whole met October 9th. I chaired the Committee of the Whole, and item A was discussed again. It was brought to us by the Planning Commission pursuant to Resolution 16319, Section 2301A of the zoning ordinance of number 543, and amended as well subsection 2 of section 2.10. That's for all the attorneys in the audience. And this is about the definition of bed and breakfast establishments under Article 2, and it relates also to residents as well. We have three ways we can go on this, Council. Council Resolution A, which would reject the Planning Commission's proposal, refer to the Law Department to prepare an ordinance, and as you can read on, Council Resolution B, reject Planning Commission's proposed revisions and refer to the Law Department to prepare ordinance reflecting the Law Department's recommendation text with the addition of a condition that requires hosts to maintain a variable log of guests and revise requirement number one of zoning ordinance 4.03. And then you can read the rest on your own there. And then Council Resolution C, remain in the committee. Councilman Barr?
Madam President, I'd like to offer option C to go to committee. Support.
Moved by Councilman Barr, supported by Councilwoman McIntyre. Was there further discussion from the council?
Madam President, I feel like I owe an explanation, because two weeks ago I asked for this to be punted to today, when we had an option to go to committee that day, and so I just want to explain why I did that then and why I'm doing this now. For those who paid attention last time, and I know we have some in the audience that were here, we've had exhaustive discussion on this item, and we've talked about it at length. We've had a couple committee meetings on this already, and we were at a place that frankly, I was, I was pretty comfortable, but admittedly, we were treading into water that was new for us. This is an issue that we had not dealt with in this way before. And so as we were doing our best to come up with language that we thought was in the best interest of the city, I was comfortable with where we were. However, hours before our meeting two weeks ago, I became aware of some potential new information out there, based on what some other cities have done, that could be helpful to us. As I expressed two weeks ago, I was not expecting that that would necessarily sway where I was, and I'm still not sure that it was, but I didn't, I didn't want to send this committee two weeks ago, just because we've talked about this at length, and I was hopeful that we could just make a decision tonight. As it turns out, I do think there's some merit to considering that information as a council, and so even though we punted it to tonight, having looked at that and seeing the benefit in discussing it further, I think it would be good to go back to committee, have that hopefully one final discussion, and then we can make a, make a decision on this with the full breadth of information available to us.
Thank you very much. We want to thank those residents and others for coming out tonight, too. You've been here quite a bit, and we appreciate it. Thanks. Anyone else wishing to...
Madam President?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
If I may address this just shortly, you know, especially to the residents who've been here probably going on four or five times now, we are making every attempt possible to get this right. So as frustrating as this might be, I spoke to our city attorney earlier today, who's of the opinion that as of now, in his purview, these type of rentals would be treated just as bed and breakfasts, under our current ordinance, and that this ordinance amendment that he has put before us would simply be an addendum or an updating of that original ordinance. So as of right now, your perspectives are probably where the law is currently anyways, but I think it's important for us to get this right the first time around, and you know, when somebody wants to provide us information or a possible better way of doing things, it's our job to listen and our job to do our responsibility appropriately. So thank you for coming out tonight, and I'm sure we'll see you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President, anyone else? Nope. Okay. All right. If there's no further discussion, yes, yeah. We're going to go to the audience, and anyone wishing to speak to this item?
Madam President?
Please?
Well, I just overheard an audience member, and I was going to ask the question, but it was probably the question we'll get asked here, so I'll let her ask it.
Certainly. Hi.
Hi, Elaine Yates. Just curious, when would it all be resolved?
Elaine, just give us your address once again for the record, please.
18956 Flamingo.
Okay, great, great.
Would we be pushed again back into the new year, and then would we have to re-present our entire stories and cases again to a new council?
That's up to, that's up to the council as well as to when they would meet here in December as well. Go ahead, Councilman Barr.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll share my thoughts on that. I can't speak for everybody, but I don't see it happening before the new year, just with this being December and knowing what's on our schedule there. So that is a downside to this, and that's part of the reason why I punted it last time versus just putting it committee. I was holding out hope we could handle it tonight while Brian and Brandon are here. And there will be a little bit of catch-up for our two new council members, but they're, they're both intelligent guys, and they've even been in some of those meetings, and I think we can bring them up to speed pretty quickly. So it will be another meeting. There will probably be some repeat, but I think there's enough water under the bridge on this that we can consider that new information and hopefully bring this to resolution relatively quickly.
So are we looking like January or February?
That will be up to our new council president, but this council, at least in my time here, has done a pretty good job of getting things to committee pretty quickly, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. And that'll be up to Councilwoman McIntyre to call that meeting. Thank you, Councilwoman McIntyre. Very capable young woman. Yes, Councilwoman Jolly.
Just for the concern expressed in regards to the new council members catching up with what has happened so far, they'll have available to them the meeting minutes and the meeting notes, so it shouldn't take too much at all. I don't anticipate that there'd be a whole lot of catch-up or repeat that has to happen.
Yeah, and they've also sat through some of these meetings that some of you have sat through as well, so they're pretty, pretty bright guys. Okay. Anyone else before I go back to the audience? Go right ahead, sir.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the City Council. My name is Al Block. Although I'm not a resident, I have the honor of serving as President of the Greater Metropolitan Association of Realtors. Gmar's 9,200 Realtors from across Metro Detroit sold over 4,000 homes in Livonia last, this year. As you deliberate the amendment to ordinance number 543 this evening, Gmar requests that this body send the proposal back to Committee of the Whole for further discussion on how the city can best regulate short-term rental properties. Gmar is concerned with the regulation of real property and therefore the proposed amendment before you. While it was initially thought to be a simple solution, undoubtedly offered with the best of intentions, if enacted, it would be among the most restrictive regulations on short-term rental properties in southeast Michigan. The amendment, rather than address specific concerns often assumed to exist with short-term rental properties, like excessive noise, garbage, parking, et cetera, the amendment implements a de facto ban on residential use of private property and seeks to regulate residents by governing what they are allowed to do within the confines of their own homes. For anyone concerned with private property rights and civil liberties, an ordinance like this should be concerning. Gmar's position on the issue of regulating short-term rental properties is clear. We simply ask that council create fair, balanced, and reasonable regulation that protects the homeowner's rights to realize the full range of residential uses of their property while protecting the community from bad actors. Our members have worked with a number of communities across the region that develop ordinances that carefully balance private property rights and the quiet enjoyment of neighborhoods. In concept, Gmar supports regulations that clearly define short-term rentals, licensing, health and safety inspections, nuisance ordinances, fines for bad actors, and the creation of a good neighbor policy. All of these regulations address real problems. We ask that you send the amendment back to committee for further review, draw upon the experience and expertise of the Realtor community, and develop a common sense framework that addresses the concerns of your community without unduly infringing on private property rights. We recognize that if you vote to send this proposal back to committee...
Point of order, Madam President?
Yes?
The gentleman has exceeded his time allotment for a presentation at a regular voting meeting, and it's, we need to move on with the rest of the agenda.
Were you almost done, President Brock?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Then, yeah. Then, yeah.
We understand this could carry over to the new year. We are fully prepared to remain engaged with you and to help your council work through this issue. On behalf of the association, we thank you for hearing our concerns.
Certainly. You do have right now a resolution on the floor to send it to committee of the whole, so what you've said-
Understood.
-just wanted to clear that up in case something-
But as the new council comes in, we are here to help formulate.
God willing, we will all be here. Yes, sir. Okay.
Thank you.
Super. Thank you. We have a resident right behind you wishing to speak. Thank you so much. Mm-hmm. Yes, good evening.
My name is DeAndrea Foizy. I own the home at 1-8914 Flamingo, Livonia, Michigan. And I just had a couple of questions. My first question was for Mr. Barr. I was wondering what this new information was. I'm wondering if that was the new information.
Okay, and your second question is?
And then I just want to make the comment that, you know, in respect to what this gentleman said, these are single-family homes, and I understand that this could be the most restrictive in southeastern Michigan as far as coming forward and putting some of these boundaries into place. However, I think that's what sets us apart, is Livonia putting families first and being the great community it is, is because we're willing to, you know, set boundaries that keep it a nice area to raise your families. So I also want the city council to acknowledge our rights as homeowners and also how it would affect, you know, how it's affected our rights and how we feel living next to that Airbnb that didn't go well, you know, and what we've had to do as a result. And I don't want to belabor that point, but I guess mostly I feel like that we want to, you know, keep Livonia putting families first, and I think that's important to remember.
Certainly. We're going to have more time to discuss it, it sounds like. Councilman Barr, did you want to do-
It's a fair question, so can I answer it?
Certainly, please.
So transparently, yes. Greater Metropolitan Association of Realtors is an organization that I relatively recently have gotten to know, and they have a wealth of data available for us. I've only begun to scratch the surface of that, but you've been at the meetings and you know, you know, you've heard us all express our objectives. We certainly understand yours. From my perspective, none of that has changed. What has changed is in our committee meetings, we even asked the question as to what we had available as far as other municipalities and what they've done here, and we didn't have much to go on. And what has been made available to me in the last few weeks is more and more examples of that that I think holds merit for our city, keeping in mind a lot of the, all the objectives that we've talked about already. So as Councilman Jolly said earlier, I appreciated his words, our desire is to get this right. The proposal that was out there to do something with this now was really more of a clarification than a change to what's on the books. So what's on the books now, I think, serves the ends you have in mind. Going forward, we just want to be very circumspect about this to make sure we do it correctly, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much again for being here and coming. All right, anyone else from the audience before we leave this and take a vote? Okay, on the floor is that resolution to go to committee of the whole. Madam Clerk, could you take the vote?
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. All ready?
Madam President.
And yes, go right ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I wanted to go back to item number five because it's critical for, I know Brian, Councilwoman Meakin had mentioned that's a critical item. Just want to confirm, you know, on that subject itself, we have three streets that are on, they had to be accepted by December 31st. I'm not sure if we go back to December 16th, if those, all three streets are on there, accepted, and it's approved by January meeting minutes, or will it be accepted, you know, by December 31st? If not, we should take off the one street that's in question and approve the other two at this time, so we get that particular streets on our Act 51. And then there's a question of plowing those particular streets for our DPW to include. So I just want to clarify, you know, if-
Todd, I'd say leave them all off.
Okay, leave, okay. Just want to confirm. Right, thank you.
Can you wait two weeks?
I just want to make sure the resolution's passed on December 16th. It's official because the meetings are typically approved in January, so I just want to confirm-
We have to have a special meeting to approve the minutes. We can do that.
Just want to make sure. All right, thank you very much.
It's that important now, it needs to be done, and I realize that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, whatever you need, Todd Zalinsik will do.
I just, I just want to clarify, make sure it's clear.
As long as we're all here, we'll be happy to do that for you. Brian may be celebrating his birthday, but, okay, all right. Then we have the ever-present Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman White, but since she's not able to be with us this evening, the very, very capable Vice President Jolly will give the report.
Thank you, Madam President. I am going to be reporting out two meetings of the Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee. The first of those took place on October 30th of 2019 on the second floor here at City Hall. In attendance were committee members, Councilwoman White, myself, and Councilman Meakin, along with the balance of our council colleagues, the city attorney, Mr. Burnier, city treasurer, Ms. Sheel, director of finance, Mr. Slater, director of administrative services, Mr. Varga, the director of DPW, Mr. Roraf, a cast of DPW all-stars, pretty much anybody who oversees anything in DPW is there, along with some representatives of Di Maria and a couple residents. At that meeting on October 30th, representatives from the DPW and Sidoc Group and Di Maria Building Company gave updates as to the status of the new DPW project. The information that was provided included a summary of cost estimates originally developed during the schematic design and update with an apparent low bid costs in detail by trade category, as well as the construction manager's proposed guarantee maximum price, GMP, to complete the project. A value engineering analysis was undertaken by the construction manager, Di Maria, and reviewed with the DPW Design Committee to identify areas of potential cost savings. The proposed GMP value of $9,227,290, as revised to include the cost of the masonry screen wall, and the total project cost is currently $9,876,829. The proposed timeline for the project indicates that substantial completion is estimated to occur by May of 2021 and final completion by July 15 of 2021. At that meeting, the committee recommended to receive and place on file correspondence from the Public Service Division dated October 25, 2019 regarding the summary status of the new DPW building project and proposed guaranteed maximum price, to receive and place on file a handout that was presented at the committee meeting from Sidoc Group and Di Maria, and the adoption of a resolution approving the GMP proposal and total price, excuse me, total project cost as revised to include the masonry screen wall. This, at the conclusion of this meeting, it was also recommended that this would stay in committee meeting, stay in committee for further meetings. We did have a further meeting on November 13th of 2019, same place, same time-
Cast of characters.
Same cast of characters. The only people different attending this meeting were councilmembers-elect McCullough and Donavick. At this meeting, the finance director for the city, Mr. Slater, proposed funding options for the DPW water and sewer building, including how to allocate costs among various funding sources and possible sources of fund. Cash versus bonding. The total project cost is $10,697,028. A portion of these costs were previously appropriated by the city council for the purchase of the land, architectural services, construction management services, utility relocation, and demolition costs. The additional appropriation required to complete this project is $8,616,143. The council reviewed the following possible options for funding. Option A would minimize the issuance of debt by funding the majority of costs through the use of fund balances. This would involve a bond issuance of $2,600,000 with the balance of costs to be paid out of the fund balances, 75% from water and sewer fund balance, 25% from the general fund balance. Option B would minimize the use of fund balances by funding the entire cost through the issuance of debt. The council also discussed another possible option, and option C, which would consist of a hybrid of option A by increasing debt issuance by 2 million with a balance coming from the water and sewer fund and the general fund. The annual cost to the average residential water customer would be $3.20 under option A, $7.20 under option B, and $5.60 under option C. The committee recommends the following. A resolution adopting A, minimizing the issuance of debt by funding the majority of costs through the use of fund balances, and a resolution adopting option B, minimizing the use of fund balances by funding the entire cost through issuance of debt, and the adoption of a resolution, option C, consists of a hybrid of option A by increasing debt issuance by 2 million with the balance coming from water and sewer fund and the general fund. This item was set to be placed on the regular agenda for this evening, and the meeting concluded at 7:55 PM, and I've done my reading for the night.
You really have.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Here, let me give you a little bit of reading. We got to receive and file some data real quick. And this is from the director of finance and the DPW as well, dated November 7th, Madam Clerk, and November 18th, if you would, also receive and file those regarding cost allocation and funding sources for DPW water and sewer building, also a letter of October 25th regarding the status of the new DPW building and proposed guaranteed maximum price received and filed, and the handout presented to the committee meeting from the Sidoc Group and the Di Maria Building Company, Inc., to be received and filed as well. Okay, council. Yes, please, go right ahead.
I'd like to offer a resolution to move this to the next regular meeting.
Do we have support on that?
Support.
We have support to the next regular meeting by McIntyre. Yes, go right ahead, Councilman Meakin.
As you heard, there were a number of resolutions offered at that time, and I just don't think we've settled on any particular one as of yet. And I think it's vitally important that we have all seven council members here to take this critically important vote for our citizens. So that's why I'm offering the resolution, move this to the next regular meeting.
Okeydoke. Anybody else? Please, go right ahead.
Only because I mentioned earlier, I wasn't sure I'd be here in two weeks, but this is an important enough item with this move into the meeting, I'll make sure that I'm here for this vote so we can have a full board to vote on it, so.
Thank you very much. That's great. Okay, do we have any others? No? Let's go to the audience. Anybody from the audience wishing to speak to number, where are we? Number seven is a committee report on water. Okay, I don't see anyone. Madam Clerk, do you want to take the vote on the resolution then, please?
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. That's going to be moved to the meeting on the 16th, everyone. Okay, we're moving right along here. Item, we're under unfinished business, item eight, which is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Court of Ordinances, noxious weeds and refuge. Council.
I would be happy to offer first reading on this, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Council McIntyre has offered first reading. We have a roll call on this one, item nine then. Is there any comment before I leave? Item eight, have you noticed your weeds in your yards lately? No? Anyhow, okay, special weeds, yes. Okay, so we'll move on to item nine, which is a roll call, a proposed amendment to the Livonia Court of Ordinances, is brought to us from the Public Service Division.
Madam President.
Yes, go right ahead.
Since my colleague, Councilperson White, is not here and gave first reading, I'll happy to offer second reading on her behalf.
Great. Okay, and you've heard second reading, which calls now for a vote. Is there discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience before we go into the vote? Hearing and seeing no one, item nine, Madam Clerk, would you take the vote?
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. And this ordinance will become effective upon publication in the newspaper. Item 10, council's request to approve a contract for caretaking services in the historical village, Act 21. And we do have new data, and that is a letter from the Director of Community Services dated November 20th of 19, and it is attached, and we'll place that on receiving file. Yes, Councilwoman McIntyre?
Madam President, I will offer approving resolution for that. It was an adjustment to the contract relative to the renewal, and Councilwoman White asked that it be at the discretion of City Council, and the new contract reflects that.
Correct.
Support.
Great. Councilwoman McIntyre has moved, Councilman Barr has supported. Is there discussion from the council? Hearing and seeing none, anyone from the audience? Hearing and seeing no one from the audience, would the clerk please take the vote?
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. Council, we are on item under new business 11. This is a request to approve City of Livonia AFSCME Union Local 1917 Contract Agreement for period December 1st of 19 through November 20th of 2022. Director, good evening.
Good evening, Madam President, council members. I'm pleased to be before you again this evening, looking for approval on the AFSCME Union Local 1917 Contract Agreement. We entered into negotiations relatively late in the season, but we were able to finish it up in short order, and again, negotiations went very well, they were very cordial, it was a pleasant experience. And you have before you the changes that we are looking to make to the contracts as they relate to salary, wages, and benefits, as well as some operational changes.
Great. Thank you very much. Questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, please.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution.
Thank you. Vice President Jolly, was there support for that motion?
Support.
Supported by Councilman Meakin. Is there discussion from the council? Is there discussion from the audience on this item? Seeing and hearing no one, would the clerk please take the vote?
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye. Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Item 12 is also a request to approve salary and benefit adjustments for the non-representative classifications for the period of December 1st of 19 through November 20th of 22. This is also brought to us by civil service. Go right ahead, Director.
Thank you, Madam President. As with the union, we, I now have before you the salary and benefit changes and modifications to benefits for the nonrepresented employees of the City of Livonia. I would like to mention how, before I go on, that there is a clarification, there is clarification language for item number six. It currently reads eligible employees who retire after commission and council approval of these changes will maintain health care provided at the time of retirement for the remainder of their life. We received several questions from employees regarding what exactly that meant, so I looked to a union contract that also has that, the language in their contract, and so we would like to amend that to, this is, would be the actual language. For eligible employees who retire after commission and council approval of these changes, the medical coverage provided for the retirees, their spouses, and families following retirement comprise a vested, fixed, and unalterable right as set forth in this resolution. The retired employees, their spouses, and families, as applicable, are entitled to said medical coverage through the retiree's lifetime and that of his or her eligible spouse as provided herein. In other words, what we were trying to do is, in the, the first language that we did was just summarize what that meant, but it was, it just caused a lot of confusion, and this spells it out as we have it in the LPOA contract and now in the 1917 contract in 192.
Okay, a lot more words. Yeah. Go right ahead.
So if I can take a shot at that?
Okay.
A shot at making sure I understand it. So what you're saying is people that retire after a presumed approval tonight-
Yes.
-would maintain those benefits through the rest of their life?
That's correct.
Okay, that was pretty simple. And that's different, that's different from before?
It is, well, it's not different. This is, well, the city has always done it.
That's what I thought, okay.
But if we don't have it in writing-
Right.
-it's not vested, unalterable, and-
Thanks, Me.
You're welcome.
By the way, there was a concern brought to us by some different people. There have been some other agencies, maybe a county around here, who has taken that upon themselves to withdraw the retirees' health benefits. to withdraw the retirees' health benefits.
Oh, yeah.
Victim. And consequently, when we looked at that, we had it summarized in six, but we thought it was better to mimic what we have for the unions, the wording, because we're trying to keep it the same between the unions, the representative, and the department heads. And that was the reason for the clarification.
Smart, smart. Yep. Okay, great. Anybody else? Okay, anyone from the audience wishing to speak to this? Hearing and seeing no one, would the clerk take the vote? 12.
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, motion passes. Easy stuff here tonight.
Did somebody actually move and support?
Yeah.
They did on the other one, but I don't-
And the last one.
Yeah.
Because neither of us are.
No, but I will.
Oh, was that on the previous one?
That was on the first, that was at 11.
Those two people still enjoy these things, so go right ahead and put them on there.
So who are you giving this to?
Is that all right?
I'll offer motion.
Yeah.
Okay, JJ and?
Brett?
Kritzman.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, item 13 then is a request to approve salary and benefit adjustments for the appointed department heads for the period of December 1st of 19 through November 30th of 22. This brought to us again, this brought to us by the office of the mayor.
Yes, it is, and I gratefully accepted the request to stand before you once again.
You look like it.
I am glad.
Go right ahead.
As with the previous request, we are requesting the same change to item number six, and this, this applies to the appointed department heads.
Okay.
And as far as any, everything else, it's all the same as the non-represented. And we're seeking approval for the same changes for wage rates and benefits.
And this is pretty standard for other cities as well?
Yes.
Are we noticing?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just double checking. Okay, great. Go ahead, Councilman, Vice President Jolly.
I'll offer an approving resolution for this as well.
Support. Same people, same place.
Madam President, if I may-
Yes, go right ahead.
Did you want to acknowledge on the record for number 13 that item six will be changed as you previously said as well?
Yeah, I did note it.
Yes, it would be exactly the same for, like we said, we're trying to keep it consistent between the represented, non-represented department heads. So with the council's permission, we would ask of the same language that Ms. Mayor read before as pertaining to 12, but also pertained to item number 13 on paragraph six.
Thank you.
I just assumed you were doing that because you're so efficient on that. Okay, great. Okay, good point. Vice President Jolly, thank you. Okay, is there any other comments? Hold on, we got to take this vote. You never know about this thing. Okay, all right, everybody's good. Anybody from the audience wishing on this? No? No comments? Okay, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Councilmember Kritzman?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Councilmember Meakin?
Aye.
Vice President Jolly?
Aye.
President Toy?
Aye, you were right. Great. Congratulations again.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yes, good job.
Thank you.
All righty, council, we're at that moment where we go back to audience communication. Anyone wishing to address the council in any manner that wasn't on the green sheet or before us tonight, please step to the podium to my left or right. Give us your name and address.
No, we're 14.
Where do you see 14?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm wrong.
Okay. Go right ahead.
I mentioned some happy news at the beginning of the meeting, and just wanted to end with condolences to the City of Trenton on the unexpected loss of their wonderful mayor. Mayor Kyle Stack had the privilege of serving with Mayor Stack for probably, I don't know, eight or nine years on the Board of the Senior Alliance. She was an outstanding mayor. She was an outstanding person, outstanding friend, and she died unexpectedly on Friday. And heavy hearts for the people of Trenton who've lost a great champion, and for her husband, Bill Jasmine, and for her mother and the rest of her family. So maybe if we could just take a moment of silence for-
Absolutely. Amen. Thank you, Councilwoman. All righty, anyone else? No? Councilman Meakin? Councilman Meakin has moved. Councilman Barr, I think you can safely show six. We are adjourned.